Good evening. Good evening. Tonight, we will start with prayer from, excuse me, Councilwoman Sylvia, led by the pledge, Councilwoman Bench. For those who would like to partake in prayer, please do.
If you'd like to bow your head. Lord, we thank you this evening for our coming together, Father God. Lord, we asking you to bless each and every one of us. Lord, we asking that you would lead and guide and direct us in the path that we should take, in the correct path, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to remain quietly and refrain from speaking, interrupting, cheering, booing, or otherwise disrupting this meeting. I will remind everyone, including my fellow councilpersons, to please silence your phone. Please silence your phone. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have nine members present and zero absent.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements, Madam Clerk?
We do have a couple. The council communication that has been placed in front of you for consent agenda item number 13 has a small revision to the address. There was an address.
I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
The council communication that's at your seat for consent agenda item number 13 has a small correction to the address.
Thank you.
And the other one is the city's waste convenience station will be open Saturday, October 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for city residents to drop off items such as building materials and recycling of glass, plastic, and paper. The station is located at the Public Works Building and access is at the Holland Avenue entrance. We have a couple proclamations on the agenda tonight. The first is designating October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week.
And that will be read by Councilwoman Scherzer, I'm sorry.
Is this the fire chief? City of Saginaw proclamation, whereas the city of Saginaw is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, members of the Saginaw Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, according to the National Fire Protection Association, statistics show that four out of five fire deaths occur in the home. And whereas, three out of five home fire deaths resulted from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. Statistics show that working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in home fires by 50%. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association has established Fire Prevention Week to create greater awareness and innovation in fire protection and prevention. As a result, countless lives have been saved each year. And whereas, the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Saginaw, and I urge all residents of this city to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Saginaw Fire Department. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 27th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2021. Signed, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, City of Saginaw, councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Mayor Pro Temm, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Oystash, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. And also signed, Tim Morales, City Manager.
Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, we graciously accept that proclamation. We thank you on behalf of the Saginaw Fire Department.
Step up, you can shake everyone's hand.
I ain't shaking his hand.
Thank you so much. I, Madam Clerk.
Our next proclamation is designating September 28th, 2021, as National Voter Registration Day.
And that proclamation will be read by Councilman Oystash.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, one of the most fundamental and sacred rights of our country is the right to vote, in order for our government to function effectively and respond to the needs of our people, citizens must play a role in shaping it. And whereas, each year, on National Voter Registration Day, we affirm the strong sense of civic duty among our people and encourage friends, family members, and neighbors to get involved by registering to vote. And whereas, U.S. Census data from 2020 shows that about one in four eligible voters are not registered to vote. National Voter Registration Day strives to reach the millions of Americans who are unable to vote due to missed registration deadlines, outdated registration, or lack of knowledge on how to register. And whereas, the elections in 2022 are of paramount importance, and the outcomes of these elections directly impact the citizens of Saginaw, the leaders elected next year will be our decision-makers in our community and our voice in Lansing and Washington, D.C. And whereas, the National Voter Registration Day, we commit to exercising one of the most precious rights we have as Americans and take seriously our responsibilities to make our voices heard and to help shape the community's future. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers and citizens of this community, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2021, as National Voter Registration Day. In the city of Saginaw, and urge all residents in our community to pay tribute to the legacy of liberty and self-government by registering to vote and encouraging those around us to join in the work of bettering our communities. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 27th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2021. Signed by Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of Saginaw, and councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Mayor Pro Temm, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Oystash, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reginald Williams II. And also the City Manager, Tim Morales, sorry.
We're back to you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I would just like to thank you to Council and Manager Morales for the proclamation recognizing National Voter Registration Day, and we invite city of Saginaw citizens to visit us in the Clerk's office tomorrow anytime between 8:00 and 4:00 to register to vote or verify your registration or where your polling location is. You can also look that up online at MI.gov/vote. Mayor, you are now at public input.
I'd like to welcome those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to tell us. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. Speakers, you have three minutes in which you will be timed by the clerk, so make sure you cover all your main points. Remain courteous and respectful to the members and of the public, and to those watching on SGTV, and to the council, so that we can give serious considerations to your concerns. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Doug Wortley.
Thank you. Good evening, Miss Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, and Mr. Manager. I am Doug Wortley. I'm a retired city police officer. I worked for 22 years for the city. I am now currently the business agent which represents the patrol group for the city police officers. I am here tonight not to be competitive, however, I'm here to shine some light on the business-as-usual approach from the city management. We were all here on August 5th during the special council meeting, reference the violence in the city of Saginaw. We heard from the council, we heard from citizens, we even heard from management that day. Since that meeting, there's still active shootings, there's still homicides that are occurring in the city. I had reached out to management. I reached out to possibly open the contract for retention purposes. I reached out maybe for a bonus retention to keep officers in the city. I even reached out just for a general meeting with the management. All were met with a resounding no. However, business as usual. There was a survey conducted recently by the city. What was on the top of that list? It was crime. Saginaw is a tough town, but there's also a lot to be positive about Saginaw, the residents, the businesses. We owe it to them to make sure that we do the right thing. And retain some officers and put crime that was on top of that survey on number one on our agenda, to help the citizens out, to help the businesses out, to keep the officers safe, and to help them do their jobs. The citizens and the business community cannot afford to be dismissive about another high-profile crime, the shooting in the business district, someone murdering on the front porch. The management has an obligation to the businesses and the citizens that Saginaw is a safe and prosperous community. These things cannot be accomplished until retention issue that the police department has addressed. I implore you to work with the men and women of the Saginaw Police Department. We can work together to find a solution for retention, the safety of the citizens, the officers, and the business community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Jones.
Good evening, Frau. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Manager Morales, my name is Christina Jones, and I am fully vaccinated. I live at 418 South 12th Street in Saginaw. And my concern tonight is all of the growth of trees and shrubbery on the vacant lots in the city. I don't know about the entire city, but where I live on the east side, you can't drive one block without seeing all of this growth. It's like the city is returning to a forest. And I don't know what can be done about it. I know, I'm aware that a lot of the lots belong to the county land bank, it's not the city property, but it's in the city of Saginaw, and we have to live with it. And I was just wondering, I don't expect the answer tonight, but I was just wondering if the county and the city are coming together and collaborating on how to address this issue of all of this growth of trees and bushes. I've seen playground equipment in the backyards of people, and behind them is a forest. And that's not safe for children to go out there and play on their equipment and all. Anything can come out of those woods. But I was just wondering, and this is an afterthought, I was just wondering if the general public knows that they can purchase this land from the county land bank at a reasonable price? I have lots across the street from my home, and at one time, you could only purchase the lots adjacent to your home, which I did. But I paid somebody to cut this grass across the street from my home for a couple of years until I purchased those lots from the county land bank. And I bought a riding mower, and my daughter cuts that grass. I did not want to come out of my front door and look at a forest across the street from my house. I just didn't want to see that. So I don't even know if the general public is aware that they can purchase this land. Maybe that's something we can do, is make it known to them. But I would just like to know that this is a problem, and I don't know who else is living with it. I've been in this city since 1934 when I was born here. I've lived here my entire life, and I've seen the good, bad, and ugly, and right now, it's pretty ugly. So I'm just hoping that something can be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Mixter.
Good evening. It is good to see everybody. I'm Alex Mixter. I live over 602 South Warren, which is about three blocks away from one of the buildings on East Genesee that not too long ago had a facade collapse. I came here about two months ago, and I made public comment in regards to this. And I also, I happen to own a building across the street as well from this building, and I was on my roof last night, and while I was there, and I was actually replacing a tarp that got destroyed in the winds we've recently had to keep water out of the building that I have. And all around me on my building, on a 360 kind of panoramic view, there was work happening on nearly every building in that district. There is a lot of activity that's happening, and in the middle of the block, the largest building is owned by the county land bank, and we have a choice to be made. And when it comes to the decision between whether or not we're going to tear down, money is going to be spent either way, and I wanted to come tonight to actually provide an alternative, because I don't want to come here and complain, I want to come here equipped with action and the things we can do. So for the last three years of my life, I have, I've been working on the Lee Commons restoration, which is over on Washington, which is a publicly-owned building that was owned by the city of Saginaw, and we've turned that into a public space through grant funding, private investment, and just pure volunteerism. We've had over 100 people come through, and we've cleared out about nine dumpsters from that building, and we're actually nearing completion. The model that we've actually pursued here is very relevant to what we could do to scale this to a number of, I mean, we have a whole bunch of publicly-owned properties. If it's through the SEDC with the Behringer Building, or if it's the land bank with, I mean, two buildings on East Genesee here, there are a number of buildings that we do not want that are in public ownership, which means we own it. And these organizations either do not have the capacity or the willingness to keep these buildings. And what we want to propose is that there's a gap in any of these properties, because if you look at Old Town, you can see that you have young entrepreneurs who have opened up small businesses in old buildings. They're running out of buildings to redevelop. In downtown, you have this chasm that you have to cross because of decades of abandonment and a whole number of issues, but if you want to invest in downtown, you have to do a lot of work. And that is unusual for the level of investment that you have to make. And so what we want to do is close that gap and say, if you have a building where you have a developer who says, "I'd love to do it," but, you know, the roof, or, you know, foundation, or those things, what happens if we take care of those issues first? And what happens if all of those things where you say, "I'd love to," but what if we're just left with, "I'd love to?" And so that's a proposal I'd like to make, and I'd love more consideration on this topic.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Lynn Vella.
Good evening, and again, I want to thank everybody for service, not just the council, but all the people that are here as well. I've been, spent many years in Saginaw. I have left and then come back, and so I want to be a support, because I know how difficult everything is in Saginaw. Things have remained stable, but yet, things have not improved. But I also want to say that since I've come back, I've noticed a difference in population, the difference, people are more educated, people are more wise. There's so many things that have improved, and the people, the people are amazing. And I went to the library today and picked up this information about all the nonprofit organizations, sorry, in Saginaw that have been working for many years for the people because they want a better community, better lives for the citizens, and want to be there when people are falling down and need help. And this was just, I just made a copy from the library, and there's so many amazing organizations ready to do, who have been working forever. And what I'm saying is, I listened to the police chief on the last city council meeting, and I actually was impressed in the way he presented the problems for the police. I'm not, you know, I'm a big police supporter in the sense of just to have police. I've also been in enough communities where I've seen that the police are the ones that everybody expects to solve all the uncomfortable, nasty little problems a city has. They just want it to go away. And people are not problems that just need to go away, we need to solve it. But the police shouldn't be responsible for doing what the citizens and the community do not want to take care of, and that's when it comes to this. The police, I believe, the police should be working with all these nonprofits. The nonprofits should be there to help the police. We have to all help each other. I've been in this community long enough to see all the squabbling and fighting that has gone in, the city council in it, in the city about all kinds of things, and people talking about how wonderful the city was at one time. It can be wonderful. There are so many things in the city, the arts programs, all the drawings that people voluntarily do to make things look better, or just get people's spirits soaring, to make them feel that they are living in a community that they can enjoy and feel proud of, and that was addressed by two previous people. So I'm saying, I want to be in a position where it's time for you to ask the community what you need from the community, and they are there, and they want to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Matthew Carpus.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Matthew Carpus. I'm president of Saginaw Police Command Association. Thank you again for allowing me to address you. The last committee of the whole and council meeting, there were a lot of questions and points brought up. Since that meeting, we've lost two more officers, not through retirements or quitting law enforcement, but we lost them to other departments. I've thought about my 13 years here, and I did my best to come up with who has come and gone. By my count, I've seen 35 officers since I've been hired leave for reasons other than retirement. Of those 35, I know of only two who quit law enforcement, the other 33 went to other departments. The last meeting, I kept hearing about how this is a problem everywhere, we're not special. But if this is true, why are these officers leaving our department for other departments? Why are we a stepping stone department and not a department officers can make a career at? I've been hearing discussion about talks at the state level about hoping, hoping for funds for officer hiring or retention bonuses and so forth. However, these funds, if they come, could be months or years away when we're facing this crisis now. Also, if we're to believe this retention and hiring problem is everywhere, then the other communities will also benefit from these same grants and bonuses and offer them to our officers to come to their departments. So again, I have to ask, what will we be able to offer that they won't? It was asked, what our department has done to facilitate relations with important members of the community? I think it takes about five years to really be proficient in this job. So when the manager says, "It's hard for officers to have relationships with people when we're busy going call to call," I think he's right. But it's harder to establish these relationships when an officer starts to learn the job, learn who's who, begin to make these connections, only to have them leave. Our officers are being looked at as numbers. This many officers here, this many leaving, this many in the academy to take the spots of those leaving. But to view this line of work and view an officer with six years on as just a number who can be filled with someone with six months on is a mistake. Mistakes in this line of work can have dire consequences. Finally, the last meeting, the subject of exit interviews for officers leaving, or surveys for current employees was brought up. A councilperson asked a simple, point-blank question, is there anything we can do to review the exit interviews to see why people are leaving to improve retention? The answer from the manager wasn't a yes or no, it was, "We're going to have to rely on the state of Michigan for their program for officer retention." I already discussed how relying on this hopeful program is inadequate planning, but I would like to hear that councilperson's question answered. Where are these exit interviews now? Has someone from the human resources department seen these interviews? Someone from the manager's office? Who's seen these interviews? And is it possible someone or some persons don't want you to see them? City administration uses the words transparency and accountability often. Are these only buzzwords, or are they words we should do business by? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, you are now at remarks of council.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes as well. We will start tonight with Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief. Thank you to all the public speakers. I think I've spoken with most of you about the issues that you've had. Mr. Mixter, thank you for everything that you're doing here in the city, and I know that you have a lot of support on council, and I look forward to your tangible ideas on how to continue with the projects that you're doing to law enforcement. Thank you again for continuing to beat the drum and talk about the issues that you're having, working with the city. Those are important things to talk about when we're dealing with transparency. And you raised important questions about what we need to do in order to move forward from here on out, because we do have an opportunity with this ARPA money to be able to meet some of the demands, whether it be retention funds, or whether it be incentives, or whatever it may be. But myself, I'm an advocate of community policing. I think that starts and ends with the city police versus the state police, and that's just my personal view. So otherwise, I don't have too much. We had a day of national, we had a remembrance day for all the victims that we had lost that was put on by Ms. Tucker, who was ill, but then I believe the mayor was there? I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make it. I hit a raccoon on the way over to the conference, and so my alternator is dead, so, Tim, I need a ride from you on the way home. But otherwise, it was great to see all, most of my colleagues over at MML's conference. Those types of spaces give us ideas to work outside of the box, and to really connect with one another on, in a platform that we usually don't have. So again, thank you so much for all the speakers that have spoken, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Please forgive my stuffiness. I don't have much to say to you all this evening, but I do want to thank the city staff in the city of Saginaw for supporting your city council as we had attended the MML conference last week. It was really a great opportunity for myself, as a new councilmember, to learn how to best and how we can increase the opportunities as well as the resources that are available to Saginaw. And I thank you to our public speakers, because even to our speakers on the police department, one of the presentations was from one of the cities who had the conversation with their police department, and they had that question of what does policing look like in our city? So it was a really good conversation to see how they actually looked at policing in their community and how the conversations, we've got to have those conversations. Thank you to Alex. I'm hoping to hear more about your ideas. I don't think you really got through with everything, but I would love to hear that. And again, thank you to, oh, congratulations to the NWAACP who held their 50th Freedom Fund banquet last evening. It was a great opportunity just to celebrate the works of this city, and that is all that I have for you all. Please stay safe, please wash your hands. The weather is changing, so please take your vitamins and wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening to the council.
Good evening to the council, ladies and gentlemen. Um, the things that I were going to say, I'm going to save them for a later date. And I would like to thank all of our public speakers. But I am so concerned, and hopefully there can be discussion with our Saginaw Police Department. I feel so bad that you feel the way you feel. And hopefully some conversation can go on, and then some works go on. The city of Saginaw, and at least I do, we depend on you guys. And to know that you're out there and you feel that way, it makes me feel bad also. And hopefully, uh, we could, you all can come together with our city manager. And maybe it's not as bad as it looks or the way it sounds. Hopefully, you guys can come together and resolve retention issues and any other issues that you may have as police officers. And kudos for the work that you have done. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Uh, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you to all of our speakers that came forward tonight. Uh, Ms. Jones and Ms. Vella, I believe Ms. Vella spoke at the temple, at the temple. And when she spoke at the temple, she spoke about revitalization. And that was a, um, a concern that was highlighted. And Ms. Jones, you brought up the situation tonight. So hopefully with the ARPA funds, that's something that we can address. I was able to have a good conversation with our Public Services Department in regards to how things are handled in the city. And we are, just like police, just like any other department anywhere, severely understaffed, severely understaffed. And it is definitely, I just want the city to understand, it's not a situation of where certain areas of the city are being ignored or anything like that. It's literally having the manpower to be able to get around to everywhere in a timely fashion. But thank you for coming forward, and just know that your concerns are not going on deaf ears. Uh, as far as our police department is concerned, I, I'm curious to know if there's going to be a study on retention done through the city of, in regards to our department. Because as Mr. Karpas stated, you know, saying that this is happening everywhere, to be honest, it is. It is something that is happening everywhere, but every department is isolated. Every department has its own issues. And I know that the city is, I'm not going to say famous, but we're, we're good for leading the way when it comes down to problem solving in Saginaw County in regards to any, any department we lead. And I hope that if there is a study done on retention at Saginaw City Police Department, it's something that other Saginaw County departments and other departments around the state may be able to use if it's beneficial. Uh, so I do hope that there is something that can be done in that regard. Uh, other than that, I would like to say that I enjoyed my fellow council members at the Michigan Municipal League Conference last week. It was a great opportunity to get to know each other in a, in a different way, a more intimate way and a fun way at times. So I was very thankful for that, and that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. Um, I too would echo what Councilman Williams said, that the MML conference was definitely a valuable experience. And it's always nice to connect with other local elected officials in other communities and just kind of get their perspective and the things that they're going through that are similar to ours or our issues. But I also want to thank the police chief, and I hope I don't mess up their rank, but Officers Lawton and Byron for setting up and taking me out on a ride along. Um, there's definitely, it's definitely a difficult job. Um, we started the ride along with 10 calls waiting from the previous shift and four officers, two on each side of town. And, um, we made a traffic stop, and there was an arrest. And it took an hour and a half from the time the interaction began to the time we left the jail. And that was the time the MSP responded to a shooting on Washington that those officers would have been dispatched to. And, um, it's just, it is such a challenging job. We talk about community policing, but there is no opportunity for community policing when you get on shift and your 10 calls deep and you run from call to call to call. Um, multiple things can be true at one time. The city may not have all of the resources to offer incentives and things like that, but that doesn't mean that the difficult, the job is any less difficult. Um, and, and the concerns are definitely not falling on, certainly indifferent ears, that's for sure. But, um, I have a tremendous amount of respect for our officers and just how hard that job is to, to do. Um, but, and that was a Friday night, an average Friday night, it sounds like, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to say, I guess, is, uh, I think I can address maybe Ms. Jones and Mr. Mixter at the same time, because your issues were, or your comments were, were related. Um, but we have many properties that are located in the city of Saginaw that are owned by the land bank that we, we don't have the ability to have them maintain to our citizens' level of maintenance. Um, we have properties that they own that are not maintained to the level of what our citizens would like to see. Um, and I think that there's a real disconnect between the people we represent and what they, what, what they think their needs are and what they see their, their neighborhood's potential as. And the direction that the land bank maybe moves in sometimes. Um, I'd like to know if it's possible later on in the meeting to hear from Mr. Jerome a little bit more about 708 East Washington, just to have all of us made aware of like what the actual condition of the building is. Um, Ms. Jones, yes, the city, the city staff works with the county all the time. Um, but I have requested through the city manager's office that we have a meeting with the county land bank so we can talk about things like the green zone, um, the Holland Corridor, which was something I'd never heard of before until I met with the treasurer and was told about that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I first want to start off by saying congratulations. The governor, our Governor Whitmer has made a few appointments, and two Saginaw individuals were appointed. The State Fire Safety Board, Ruth Ann Knapp, she's on the Saginaw Board of Education. She was appointed to that board. And then also to the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, Amy Spatafor. The manager, managing director from Pitt and Belkany was appointed to that board. So I wanted to share my congratulations to them. Also, thank you to the rest of the public, or to the public speakers for coming in today. We definitely appreciate and love hearing from our constituents. Um, as mentioned, a council member, I am that council member that requested or asked the question, and I will continue to be that council member to ask the question, because if we don't address the retention problem, we really don't care about our police department and the officers who are taking the time to serve and protect our communities. So I am confident, because I have yet to receive a response from that meeting. So I look forward, and I'm confident to receiving that response, whether it's redacted, if it's transparent and very open to the rest of council. I'm sure I'm not the only one that would like to see or hear what is happening and why our officers are leaving, because it's been shared that it's not just for retirement. So, um, I too, I plan on setting up a ride along, Councilwoman Bench. And I had a discussion about it, and she shared some insights. And I think that will give, I hope all of council sets up the time to take a ride along. But, um, I also share what, um, Councilwoman Sylvia says that it's hard to hear that this is how you guys feel. And I couldn't imagine if I was in your shoes, how I would feel. It is not going on deaf ears, as been mentioned, but just know that I will keep asking. And I won't, I won't let you guys down, because that is what I am here to do and sitting in this chair to do. So I too enjoyed the MML conference. I was unemailed to attend the strategic planning session, but I received lots of information from my fellow council members. And thank you to the manager for the summary and the follow-up. But, uh, received some more information at the MML conference on some of the ARPA funds and then also investment into community. So it was overall a very good experience. Definitely appreciate all of the support that our mayor gives us in continuing our education and learning and growing within the MML. So I look forward to more opportunities, but also growth within myself here on council.
Perfect.
Thank you. Next, we have council, excuse me, Councilman Oster.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and welcome to everybody tonight. For those watching at home and here in the council chambers, for all of our public input speakers that came too. So without rehashing everything, just to let you know that Saginaw Police Department, 100% on what my colleague just said here again, what our other council members have said. So I back her up and them as well. And again, we'll try to, to figure this out. I also have contacted our city manager and asked for a ride along now that we've kind of gotten, we're still in the pandemic, but I guess things could be, be more safe. And so I've asked for that as well. Um, to some of the other public input speakers, I think Councilwoman Bench kind of wrapped it up together. Christina and Alex, you guys kind of go together because of land banks involved. And that was actually my thought process when I was listening to the both of you. I do, just to say that I do know that the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy has done a study in the city. They've inventoried all of our vacant properties. And the next phase that they're going into that I, I heard of, and I don't know where their project is at, actually to get those properties attained, if I'm correct, where they would actually get somebody that would own them. Because we know if somebody owns a property, they're going to take care of it. And they're going to mow the grass. So I 100% I hear what you're saying there. And it's even in my neighborhood too, if we have the same situation, we're trying to work through that. Um, I do ask for the public that is listening. You can go on the city website under sonar. You can find out if the land bank does own them. Uh, give them a call, let them know, because sometimes what they don't know, they can't take care of and serve. Um, Alex, again, too, I like, also what I think was Councilwoman Scherzer said about the study was at Ms. Bench, I'm looking forward to kind of what Darren has to say about that building myself. So people know that I do have a very big passion for preservation. And also, an opportunity, we've all were at MML. Uh, there was some stuff that I need to break down and try and follow up on, because there was more money that's coming through the governor's office into preservation grants. And so there's some folks there that we can get ahold of and try and step through this process, because we always know it's large and we kind of got to break and put all the pieces together. So thanks for coming out and talking about that. Ms. Lynn, you spoke about Saginaw tonight and the people of Saginaw. I will just tell you this, that I moved here in 2004. And for the reason that you said tonight about the people of Saginaw and their passion, that is what I stayed. Once I got here from Sag, got into Saginaw and just was being able to be exposed into Old Town, wherever you were hanging out in coffee shops, you really kind of got a vibe. I always tell everybody Saginaw's got a special vibe for the people that are here and the passion that they have. And then it was not too long after that that I got involved in things and kind of whereas led me to where I am today. Um, so thank you for coming out and sharing those ideas. I do have a couple more things I'd like to talk about. Can get them in. There was kind of a neat opportunity to go. There was an OX Icon that was put on this weekend by the gentleman Jacob Wei, who's, and thank you.
Councilman Mayor Portier.
Good evening, good evening, fellow councilmen and citizens. Um, we heard your concerns, and hopefully they all will be addressed in some form or fashion. But I would definitely like the city of Saginaw and the county to get together to find out what we're going to do with this land here. I think we need to have a conversation and sit down with them and really iron something out to make things happen here in the city of Saginaw. Uh, Mixter, I appreciate what you're doing in the city of Saginaw. Continue. And maybe we need to have a conversation with, with you and other people in the city of Saginaw who would like to approve some of these and get with the, uh, the land bank and the Chamber of Commerce and other entities that want to invest in the city of Saginaw and see how we can come together to make that happen. I think it can be done. So don't keep beating that drum. Keep beating that drum. And I'm sure that something's going to happen soon. Um, as far as the police concerned, um, I hope that you guys can eventually find out what's, what's wrong with the detention. But I think that people have been coming to the city of Saginaw using us as stepping stones for a long time, because, um, I notice a lot of people that come here to be policemen, uh, come here to be a policeman from some other township, and then they leave and end up going back to those townships. I have noticed that myself. So I don't know if that was intentional or not. Uh, but I prefer to work on the side of mentoring, um, our young adults or young kids so they don't end up being criminals. And I'm going to continue to do that. And hopefully, uh, everybody here, if you're really concerned about crime in the city of Saginaw, the best thing to do is mentor somebody. Mentor these kids who has been mentored by other kids. And I guarantee you, uh, that association would definitely bring about some type of assimilation with these kids. I mean, if kids are talking to it, if they don't have no adults at all, then somebody else needs to step up to that adult and show those kids how to do things in a proper manner. Um, you know, spending time with kids like an investment in our future. I've been in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for over 30 years. I have six or seven little brothers. I only had one or two get in some trouble. And, and one of them got the wedgie from the police officer, and we never had a problem out of him since. Um, another one got into some trouble, and he was grown after he got into the trouble, but he's going to have to deal with that. It's going to be a lesson that he learned. And, and it was a silly issue. But what I'm saying is that when kids, they come from environments where there's only one parent in home, they don't have the opportunity, if the mother's out working, they don't have the opportunity to have somebody to talk to them about positive things at the dinner table or what have you. And, and when I have my little brothers at the household, if, whatever I'm doing at the house, that's what they're doing. And the wife are going grocery shopping, they're going grocery shopping. They'll see somebody going grocery shopping and don't, uh, first thing they do is go to the candy aisle or the beer liquor line. So I think I got beat out of some of my manners. All right. Okay, we got a new person over there. But anyway, thank you, and thank you guys for being future mentors in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of the public speakers for speaking. Um, it is about that time, Mr. Manager, that we bring the land bank back in so that people can understand that we do try to have a relationship, and we're working on the relationship. Part of the ARPA training that we went through during the strategic plan, and even with us in Grand Rapids on last week, it talked about networking. It talked about getting with other agencies, developing a plan so that the ARPA dollars are spent in the right direction. I know that me and the city manager have talked about it, and I'm sure that that's the move that we're, that we're looking at doing along with the citizens, because we still need your input. We still need to know what it is that you want. And as long as it's within reason, then we can do it. I'm sure we're going to try to make it happen. My fellow police officers, the men in blue, what can we say? We need you. You need us. We all are going to get through this some kind of way. We just got to figure out how we're going to do it. It is not that we've been turning our deaf ear on anything that anybody's been saying, it's that we just don't know. We don't know where the funds are going to come from. We don't know what the retention rate is. We don't know. And so now that you have brought it to our attention, again, I'm sure that the city manager, along with anyone else who has to, will give us some clarification so that we can begin to move forward. Saginaw cannot grow if we stay stuck. It cannot grow. The trees, I know all about the trees. Come in my neighborhood. I know all about the animals. Come in my neighborhood. I got a zoo in my backyard. And I didn't even pay for it there, but it's there. Okay? So I don't want you to think that you guys are living somewhere that I don't have to live, because I do live there, and I see the same thing. But what I've learned how to do is, and I know that some of us are older, we can't do it. Ms. Jones is good. Ms. Jones used to be out there on that lawn mower, pushing that lawn mower. I remember, before she bought all of them riding lawn kores that she got. She would be out there beautifying her neighborhood. I'm like Michael on this one. Let's grab up some of these young people and see if we can get them to come and help us. Let's be their mentors. Let's show them that there's a different way of doing something different. As far as the conference last week, it was very, very rewarding. I want everybody to know that I, that you were represented well at the Michigan Municipal League by your, by all of us sitting up here with the exception of one. And all I got was good reviews. How attentive they were. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Our next item is reports from the manager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And first, I will comment about some of the questions that came up. So the city of Saginaw is in a good financial position from an audit standpoint and from our fund balance. However, we are considered a financially distressed community by the state of Michigan. Council just approved a financially distressed grant at the last meeting from the state of Michigan that we would not be eligible for if not for that fact. And there are a lot of factors that go into that. Population loss, real taxable value, long-term liabilities, OPEB funding levels, and inability to raise tax revenue. Those all have an impact on our bond rating, too. The city has worked with our unions over the past several years. We have five unions in the city. The SEIU has three different groups, part-time, hourly, salary. We have the IFF, we have the AFSMI Union, we have the COM and the POM. All of these bargaining units have settled contracts. We are abiding by our contracts with those unions. There is not retention bonuses in any of those contracts. It's not retention pay, there aren't any openers in those contracts. So you hear a lot of talk, because you're hearing from a group of people, we have retention issues across the city, across the city. So let's not just think about one department and think about how do we address that. We have a critical division in this city that could be half-funded, only half-staffed, I mean, within the next few weeks. And we're losing those employees to other local units as well as the private sector. So this is not an issue that is solely in the police department. We have water treatment, which I would say is a very important function for the city of Saginaw. We have skilled trades in those departments. Very difficult to fill skilled trades and also retain those employees at this time, because there's high demand for skilled trades, and those individuals can go across the country and make very good wages. We have mechanics that work in our water treatment, wastewater treatment, and in our public services department. Those individuals are in high demand as well. So it's incumbent upon us to work with all of those groups and treat them all equally and fairly. And I can tell you, I've been with the city since 2009, and there was some talk, some comments about how do employees feel? I will tell you from personally hearing from employees that we have a lot of employees in the city that think that they're not cared for unless they're public safety employees. And they feel overlooked as well. And my job is to manage the entire city, and I have to look at all of those factors. And that's what I'm doing. And I will say, we had some comments from speakers that said they haven't received anything. I asked for a proposal from the union weeks ago, from the police union. I have yet to receive any plan or request for retention items from the union. So with that, we do have a few other items, and we have a few presentations. I will remind everyone that the fire awards ceremony is October 5th, 10:00 a.m. at Station One next week. We're looking forward to that. And I will thank council members, I understand Councilwoman Scherzer couldn't join us for the strategic planning session, but thank you all for participating in that. I think that that showed, was an opportunity to show the public how we came to those categories that are in the summary. And I understand it is difficult for some people to attend sessions like that during the daytime, so I think that we can have some additional sessions that Councilman Scherzer suggested, maybe some evening, or we could do something on a Saturday or Sunday. I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to do that. In line with what one of the speakers said, I did present to alignment Saginaw last Wednesday as well about the ARPA funds, and I gave them an update on our strategic planning session and some of the ways that you came about the categories. We didn't have the summary report from public sector consultants at that time. We do have it now, and I did commit to Renee Johnston, who coordinates that group, that I would go back to that, and I know the mayor's made that same commitment. So I think that group, there's an opportunity there to get a lot of input from the NPOs on potential uses of ARPA and get some of their ideas as well. And we do have an item on the agenda tonight with, that relates to the Japanese Cultural Center and Tea House. We have two members from the board here this evening, Les Tinknell and Todd Hall are both here. They just wanted to provide a brief update on the upcoming project, so I said that they could have a few minutes during management update to provide that.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, and Manager Morales, thank you for giving us the opportunity. I'm Leslie Tinknell. I'm a member of the board, and Todd Hall is the Chair of the Board of the Japanese Tea House and Cultural Center. We're proposing that we provide two new facilities on the site of the Japanese Cultural Center. When the Tea House was first constructed, it was meant as a tea house and Japanese culture of the tea. It did not provide any storage space, any meeting space, or any public toilets, and we have operated this way for the number of years. This new facility which we're talking about would cover those areas. We're talking about a very small building, which is little less than 800 square feet. And in it, it will have a meeting room that can be all used as a multipurpose for workshops, lectures, or any kinds of activities, and a gathering space. The other part of the building is a storage area. We have collected a great number of very beautiful and valuable artifacts that we need proper storage for, so we have provided that. Plus, we've added two outdoor toilet facilities for all the gatherings that we do in the park, which were not covered, which replaces the porta potties and all of that that we've had to deal with over the years. So this building is to cover all of those things, and it's located at the bottom of the hill as you come down the walkway from the parking lot. So it doesn't interfere with or try to compete with the Tea House. The Tea House is a gem, and we do not want to compete against it. So it's a utility building, and it's very, very modest in scale. The second project is a pavilion which replaces tents and everything else that we've had to bring in over the years. The pavilion is a 30 by 30 square. It's an open pavilion, it has a covered roof, and so it has no utilities or anything except electrical outlets to provide. And we looked at this to provide for all kinds of activities, outdoor exercise, gatherings, receptions, and our own Japanese festival that we have in September. So both buildings are very small and very modest. The pavilion building will be west of the Tea House, which, towards Lake Linton, which, if you try to gather the site, so it sets up on the high part before it slopes to the water at Lake Linton. So those are the two projects that we're proposing to do, and we hope to get underway shortly.
Do we have any questions?
No question, just a slight comment. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
First to my fellow wife, family member, happy birthday. But I just have a question, how is, you may have said it, but how are you paying, or how is this being funded?
Well, my company has donated considerable amount of money, but we're also going to do, you know, some grant funds and then go to local businesses to help continue the rest of it. But we've also been blessed with a contractor. This is something we've been working on for a few years, obviously COVID slowed us down, but David Dennis with Great Lakes Homes has stepped in, and they take on a project every year where they, you know, kind of give back to the community. So he's agreed to kind of basically be the general contractor and help arrange all the work and not even charge a fee for it, so that's going to really help a lot also. So we're hoping to break ground in the fall, so we would be ready for, you know, in the spring when we reopen people.
Well, it definitely adds to the sentiment of thank you for all that you do. You are one of the silent movers, I consider, in the city, so to know that not only are you involved with it as a servant, but the financial backing of your company just makes it even more worthwhile that you've invested your home, your life, and now a passion into the city, so thank you. And all your friends, too.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd and Les, and they have served on the board for quite some time, so we appreciate that. And we did get a question from Councilman Lamar Sylvia about the funding as well, so that did answer it. And the way the Tea House works, when that project is done, that will be city property, so we'll ensure it and we'll plan for the long-term maintenance of that, but that's the way the Tea House does, but that's, I believe it's a $300,000-plus project. We do have another presentation. I got a note here and on my notes that I forgot to mention, just for purposes of retention that you asked about, we did look at that. We have 425 employees of the city. At the time this report was run, we had 62 vacancies, we had one vacancy in the police department. So the rest of those vacancies are in the other departments that I mentioned. So just wanted to give you that information.
Can you repeat that one more time?
We have 425 employees. At the time this report was run, we had 62 vacancies in city employees, and we had one in the police department. The other 61 are in other departments. And there may be some police officers that are in process, but I know there are other employees that are in process at other areas as well, the division that I mentioned. We've lost a number of people in that division in public services, and they are in, I know we have at least three members on that team that are also in hiring processes other ways, so it's broad-ranging. So our second presentation actually is a result of Councilman Ostas, I believe, saw an update from Racer Trust some time ago, and talked to them about presenting to council, and Racer Trust contacted me about providing information on the properties that they own in the city. So we do have two representatives from Racer Trust here this evening, Steve Black, who has worked in Saginaw actually for a long time, and also Dave Favreau with Racer Trust. So Steve, you proceed.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Madam Mayor, council members, and manager, thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda tonight and to speak with you. Tonight, we'd like to give, and again, I want to point out my colleague, Dave Favreau, our Michigan Deputy Cleanup Manager. If you have any difficult questions on environmental cleanup, I'll be pulling him in. Tonight, I'd like to give you a very brief presentation on the Racer Trust properties here in the city of Saginaw. Just some background for the council members, Racer Trust is an environmental response trust. We're not part of General Motors, we're not part of the federal government, we're an environmental response trust, nonprofit, that was formed as a result of General Motors' bankruptcy. When General Motors went bankrupt, they left behind in bankruptcy almost 36 million square feet of property, as well as almost 7,000 acres of property. At the time of our inception, we were one of the largest environmental response trusts formed. Those properties span 14 states, and 60 of those properties, which one location could have multiple properties, 60 of those locations out of the 80 locations have some sort of environmental challenge. We're a unique environmental response trust in that we have a dual mandate from the court. Many environmental response trusts are charged with cleaning up properties. We're charged with cleaning up properties and finding a productive reuse. And please feel free to visit our website anytime, racertrust.org. It's a robust website, and we're in there almost daily. So here in Saginaw, we have five properties, three of which we have sold. Those properties that were sold are probably more commonly referred to as the Malibu Site. But for environmental record-keeping purposes, and because of the regulators and how they keep track of the site, it was broken out when the trust was formed into three separate sites, Malibu, Malibu Peninsula, and then the Green Point landfill. Then the other site we have is the Saginaw Nodular Site on the north end of town, and then not far from the City Engineering Building is the Howard Industrial Land Site. This is an aerial of the Malibu Site. Malibu is a mammoth site, 334 acres, and you can see the callouts on that for the different environmental budgets that are dedicated towards that site. The Nodular Site, I apologize, this is a busy slide, but the Nodular Site is very gerrymandered. You'll notice on the slide a red line, and again, Nodular's up on the north side of the city, not far from the city wastewater treatment plant. The red line represents the corporate boundary between the city and Buena Vista. The majority of that property is in Buena Vista Township of the 226 acres, and about 42 acres, mostly along M13 there, is located in the city. And then the last property we have in the city is the Howard Industrial Land. Again, it's not far from the City Engineering Building, just a little bit north of 46. Environmental activities performed by Racer to date, first going up to the, on the north side to the Nodular Site. Since Racer was formed, we have demolished the old wastewater treatment plant, we've demolished the old pipe trestle that you may remember that used to go across M30, there was some PCB-impacted sediments removed, and now the site has deed restrictions in place, and we're primarily in a monitoring phase. We've been also working with MDOT to bring clean fill on the site, to hopefully position that for redevelopment opportunities. It's a technique we've used in other markets. The Howard Street Site, that was owned by General Motors for a period of time. They had a warehouse on that site that was demolished in the 1980s, and that site has been sitting fallow since then. There's been a lot of characterization on the site, some clean fill was placed on that site, and we have deed restrictions on that site. It's zoned M1, and we're marketing for that for a non-residential use. Malibu Site, that was the real big site on the southwest side of town. Demolition under Racer's ownership in the last 10 years, demolition of the foundry building, some removal of lead and PCB-impacted soil. We do have some PFOS concentrations there in the groundwater. The big takeaway from this slide is the third bullet from the bottom, is that we worked really closely with Eagle and with the DNR, as well as their outside contractors, and with our outside consultants, to make sure the site conditions were compliant with a recreational use for that property. And we're happy to say that that project has been a real success. We view it as a real success, and we really appreciate the partnership with many entities here locally to make the Saginaw River Headwaters Rec Area possible. If you haven't been following that, that is going to be a new park that is going to be owned by the state of Michigan, but operated by the county. That was a model that has never been done before and was kind of, is trend-setting with the state. That property is on track to be reprogrammed as a passive recreational space here in the city. And on the screen are some of the partners, many partners, that were involved with that, and looking forward to construction on trails and some of the other amenities that are going to be coming to the Saginaw River Headwaters Rec Area in the coming years. And with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions?
When is the park going to be open after you opened the Salt Street area that you were just talking about?
We had a virtual groundbreaking this time last year. So it's kind of been a soft groundbreaking. I haven't spoken with the county lately on exactly when they're planning on having an opening. What I can say and what is cool about the project and the partnership with the state of Michigan and the county and as well as the philanthropic community, Saginaw Community Foundation, among others, is that they're lining up quite a bit of funding to pay for trails, platforms, signage, and other amenities to make it a, you know, a real large and unique property in the city that is also a connection to the Iron Bell Trail. So I think they have a soft opening, but I'm sorry, I don't know exactly the date.
Did you have a contractor on, or right now starting work?
Dave said they have a contractor on site right now, starting work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yes.
So what you were just talking about is then they are starting to start, like a lot of the trails and the different, because I've seen the site plans, what they were looking to do with different gathering areas and ponds.
Yep.
Okay, good, good. What kind, so it's been abated? Are they still working on that, too? Or, because you said you brought another person along with you tonight for just some of the, like the ground. Because we did have a plant there, so I'm assuming they might have had some cleanup. Has that been completed?
Yes, as I mentioned, mentioned very quickly earlier in the presentation, as we were looking at the repurposing of a former industrial site to a passive recreational use, candidly, there was a lot of eyes on that. The site is very well-characterized, and we did work with the state. And we do have agreement with the state, specifically Eagle, as well as DNR hired their own outside consultant to make sure that it was safe for recreational use.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Steve. And Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
Our next item is the consent agenda.
I'm sorry.
Do we have, we can ask the manager a question, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Do we have any questions? Well, I'm sorry, we were down here, and everything is quiet. I'm so sorry. Yes, you may ask the city manager any questions that you need to ask him.
Thank you, Mayor. You stated that you asked for a proposal from the union on retention issues about a few weeks ago?
I believe it was the same day as our committee of the whole meeting. I did ask for, I did say that we, at this point, were not willing to reopen the contract, because we have five different contracts. I, however, asked for a proposal. And Mr. Wortley indicated that I would get that, he would get that to me right away. I've yet to receive that.
Okay. And my last question, you gave the numbers, the 425 employees. When was that reported?
I did get that today, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, but I do know, so generally, our employees do communicate with the department. So we do know when they're in the hiring process. And there are several other employees that are in various hiring points, in different hiring processes throughout the city.
Thank you.
Do you, I was wondering, do you think this retention question came up because of the Harper Fund monies? That they think that maybe they may be able to get a piece of that to, in all seriousness?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily speculate on that, but there, we have various positions in the city that we have a very difficult time even hiring for. We are able generally to hire police officers. And I understand, as was mentioned, you would rather have experienced officers versus new officers. And it does take, I know you're all aware, it takes time for them to be trained and get to know. But that's true throughout the city. When we have maintenance and service staff, which work on our water lines, they have to learn the system. When we have people at our water wastewater plant. The water plant is from the 1920s. Parts are not available. Those parts, they generally machine in the plant. So it's similar. We want to keep long-term employees in all of our areas. And I know we do have, I can tell you in fiscal services, from working down there, we have employees that, there are positions that we turn over almost every six months. And that, part of that is the pay level. Part of that is because, you know, it's kind of a starting position in the city. And within our contracts, people can move throughout a bargaining unit for most of them. But that makes management very difficult to have those areas. And most of that is related to pay. And I think that, I think, Mayor Protem, that's the primary issue we're talking about in policing as well. If you have officers that are leaving to go to other cities, maybe there's a different pay level. Maybe there is still a pension there. Maybe there is retiree healthcare. With Saginaw, the pension and the retiree healthcare liability that we have is one of the reasons why we don't have more employees. Because that cost within our general fund is probably somewhere at 13 or 14 million of the $34 million. So you're getting up to close to half of our general fund is paying for those benefits. So I don't know that the ARPA funds have, are motivated, are motivating for this. But I think there is a pay issue, but it doesn't impact just one group of employees.
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, Councilman Williams asked some of the questions that I thought about asking. And not to say that all city employees are not equal, but when it comes to fire and police, I would actually, in my personal opinion, put that on a different level. And I don't want to add contention or anything like that. But what I will add, Mr. Morales, if you would meet with Mr. Matthew Carpus, he said he tried to get a meeting, or they tried to get a meeting, can we say today that that meeting will take place?
Prior to, if it is about contract, if they want to start, I don't think we want to get into this discussion at the open meeting, but I would be willing to meet once I get that proposal that I asked for. I have yet to receive that proposal, and that was my response to request for the meeting. Send me a proposal so I know what you want to talk about.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
My question would be, too, and I don't know whether this would be the HR director presenting, what is our recruitment strategies? Who do we recruit through that we have 62 vacancies? Is it a department, does each department have a recruitment strategy that each director has worked on? Or, because I know through the police department, they've used the bridge the gap. But typically, that's an outside organization doing the work. What do our departments, what are the actual department, department head's strategies for recruitment and retention?
It depends on the position. We have some very specialized positions in, especially in the water department. So a lot of that outreach work is done through the American Water Works Association. Our Director of Water and Wastewater is a former president of that organization, very involved. And a lot of that outreach is through that organization. We also have people in our water treatment that are instructors at Delta College in water treatment, water and wastewater treatment. So we're trying to mentor youth, to encourage them to apply in the city of Saginaw as well. So various strategies depending upon what the department is. You know, you recruit, for a long time, we had a vacant city engineer position, a vacant assistant city engineer, a vacant engineering tech. So those are very specific positions. And you want to talk about our level of pay in recruiting those positions. Compare our level versus the private sector for an engineer. So look at that retention and the staff we have there now and the fact that, you know, we are a financially distressed community. We don't pay as much as Gross Point pays or Auburn Hills for a city engineer. So, you know, we do try to recruit people from the area. That's another strategy that we have, so that people don't leave. But to answer your question, and I'd be happy, Councilman, to have you meet with our HR staff to talk about that, if you want to get into more detail.
You gave me a really good explanation. But I think, I think one thing that the city really, when we talk about this conversation, a lot of it is revolving around a budget. And the fact is, if we do not have additional revenue coming into our city, we're going to eventually cut from somebody's department. So at this point, the conversations are great, but we have to have ways to increase our revenue, whether that be removing the tax cap or having additional conversation that if we want to see more in our city, we're going to have to have more money coming into our city.
Excellent point. Thank you. To add on to what Councilman Copeland is talking about, you hit a very good point, the city's tax cap. And the more that we start to talk about this, the residents are starting also to realize what this tax cap is doing to our city and how we are still operating on 1979 operating funds. So I don't know how anybody in a household can live on funds, on a salary from 1979 until we still keep our services going for our citizens. A question, manager, do you think if that cap was lifted that we would have more opportunity to, you know, raise the salaries for our employees? And I guess my question might be twofold where, when we look at our city employees and their salaries, how are we benchmarking that towards others in the industry? And let me give you an example. So I work in the finance industry, I work in IT. So I'm not necessarily, you know, benchmarking in that. I'm being benchmarked in the industry for what IT is being paid for as opposed to what a teller or a mortgage officer would be looked at. So I'm just kind of wondering how the city is looking at that. And maybe is that affecting where we can't pay as much because we are the municipality? Maybe it's because of those general fund issues? Yes, you know, it all goes back to budget and revenue issues that Councilman Copeland mentioned. So we have been, I think, when I started with the city, they did not have settled contracts for any bargaining unit. And I think it was close to, Councilman Williams probably knows, but I think it was close to six years. We settled six years' worth of contracts at one time. And I believe the six years, probably the majority of those years were zero increases across all of our bargaining units. So that, at that point, that likely put us behind other municipalities because the private sector generally does pay more. However, we probably have far more generous healthcare benefits than most private sectors. So since that time, since that, those collective bargaining agreements were settled, we have been in line in our pay increases with other municipalities across the state. And I can tell you that from talking to other managers and also seeing what they're doing with their contracts and also being on the MBS Airport Commission Board. I know what their increases are generally and also the Water Supply Corporation. But as, it's definitely something to look at across the board. And I understand the importance of public safety. But we only need to look at what happened south on I-75 to understand the importance of knowledgeable and good water treatment personnel as well. All of these employees are important. And it depends on what service that you're looking at at the time. If you're working with our cemetery staff and you're not getting the service, that's the most important service to you at that time. And I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, two injuries in that department, and we might not be able to function just because of the level of staffing. But I think I didn't answer the tax cap question yet. But the tax cap is a, I think, a long-term solution. So if the tax cap was lifted tomorrow, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have an influx of revenue right that second. But I think that goes a long way to solidifying the future of the city. It's right now, what we look at is, okay, would we like to pay all of our employees more and benchmark everything against the private sector in other cities in the state? Definitely, we would, but we can't afford that at this time, given where we are. And what we're, what we know is coming down in the next five to 10 years with our pension liability and our retiree healthcare. That's what we always have to have in the back of our mind when we're looking at these things as well. Yeah, I want to add on to that a little bit, too, because as you were talking, I got to thinking, too, because whenever we talk about tax cap, if somebody doesn't understand what we're talking about, please reach out to the city or council members, we can get you the answers. It's not like, it's not like we're trying to raise your taxes, but we have a cap. And our cap is capped in two ways. I want the public that's listening to understand this. So you have a millage cap, which is capped at 7.5. And, thank you, Ms. Brown, we've talked in the past. Our director is here tonight for finance. That headly actually affected us back in the 90s. And so we're actually capped there at 7.38. And our, actually, our general fund cap is $3.8 million. So we can't exceed that. And we're right, we're just hovering right underneath that in our general fund. If, in a perfect example, why we're talking about, so I'm going to expand out a little bit farther, too, is we talked in the past meetings about our police and firefighters' millage that we passed. And of course, that's a millage again. So you're looking at the property values and taxable values of your home. And we saw what happened after 2008, you know, everything dropped. And so we started losing money out of that fund, and we couldn't fund as many officers and public safety again. But that's a $13 million expense, 13 to 14 million dollar expense to the city. So if we're capped at 3.8, how can we put that back into the budget? You know what I mean? You have to do, we're having, we've done everything we can to keep things running for the citizens of our residents. And I want to bring up, too, because that's also came up in question, like, well, why am I getting a separate assessment for my trash bill? Why isn't that not in my taxes? Well, if you take how many residents that we're actually collecting trash for, and you take that $230, and you say it's 40,000 homes, well, if you do the math right there, again, we're at about $10 million. So that's why you're getting a separate fee, because we're operating underneath that tax cap all the time. So I'm glad you kind of touched on this a little bit. I got to talk about it a little bit more. Because every time we get this elevator speech on the tax cap, a lot of heads, they shake and they understand why we're having issues. And so, and like you said, great point. It wouldn't be something that would be immediate, but it would set a precedence for the future for the cities to operate better and to have the services and things that we need. So that's a good point that you made there. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
When does the current CBA expire with the police department?
All of them expire in 2020, the end of the year. So we, most of the contracts, we would likely, well, we would be starting probably early next year.
Okay. Are we able to see those CBAs?
Yeah, yep, they're open.
And then also, in the interim rules, they had stated that to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers, would you include all 465 or 63 workers that work for the city as essential workers or certain departments?
I would include everybody who worked, excluding myself. But I would include everybody. I, I would include everybody who worked, excluding myself, but I would include everybody else who worked in that, in that calculation, yeah, because there were people who, who could not avoid working with the public during that time with the services that we provide, we ran an election during that time, so the entire clerk's office was working with the public, our cashiers probably have the most face-to-face interaction with the public on a daily basis, just by the number of people that come to City Hall to, to pay bills, our street staff were working with one another in close quarters, so I, I would include all of, all of the people that worked, we did have some people that were, were off for various reasons during that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam, I'd just like to say, as a department head myself, and I see your department, some of your department heads, I, I think it's safe to say that they don't envy, I don't envy your position, because it is, and I'm not saying that for your benefit, but it's a, to think as a department head, just one department to have to manage, one budget to have to manage, and for you to do what you do, yeah, it's not for your benefit, I'm just pointing that out for the citizens that are watching, you're essential, so.
He is ready, but I'm telling that in front of the public. Might be asking for a raise.
Keep it down, bro, keep it down.
But I, I, I appreciate those comments, but I, I know, I, I've been with the city for a long time, and I know all of these departments, so that's why I'm talking about it, I, I work with all the department heads, and I know a lot of the staff that are out there working, and there have been pay issues and reductions in staff over the years, and I, and I know it's hard for all of them, to, to focus on just one area, it, I, I don't think that's fair, I think it's, it is a citywide issue, but as this end of the table pointed out very well, it, it goes back to our budget, very, very difficult to manage, and it, it is getting harder, and as, as people throughout the state of Michigan in our region retire from other areas that aren't in that situation, it, it does become harder for us to keep skilled people, I know we, we lose people to the Water Supply Corporation, even which we're a part owner, but, but I do know that they, they pay higher salaries than we do to the water, water treatment people, and I know, and I know, you, you are all aware, particularly Mayor Protem Balls, but we're trying to hire electricians, like I said, and, and pipe fitters, and, and mechanics, and all of those are in such high demand right now, and they can, can go pretty much anywhere, so I think our departments do a good job at retaining those individuals by providing a good place to work, but sometimes when it's 10 or 15% higher rate of pay, then it makes it difficult.
Five seconds. So you heard, we're hiring, we're hiring, the city of Saginaw is hiring, and, manager, I owe you an apology during your, during your part of the report, because I got a new phone, and I thought I had my phone inside, and so I actually shut it off, so I'm sorry my phone went, and to my colleagues and the people here and in watching that my phone went off during the meeting, so I apologize.
That's five hours ahead, man.
Okay, that was 10 seconds, but I had to get that out. Thank you, I'm done.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Here, we are now at the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that he's, uh.
I got the first read.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the web, on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. Need a motion, need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So we'll support it.
Okay, I'm not sure, Ms. Christie, did you get who was who?
I have Copeland for the motion, and Monique for the second.
Do we have any exceptions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Sorry. I'm so sorry.
Sorry, man.
We all went to Grand Rapids and we literally got sick. So please, charge it to our heads, not to our hearts. Okay, so. Madam Clerk.
We are now at Boards, Commission, Committee.
I need a motion to approve.
No, no, this is the reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any reports, does anybody have anything they want to report about any commissioner board meetings?
I finally do. So the Planning Commission, I'm excited we're meeting this Wednesday with other commissions and groups in the city to talk about the matter.
I have a meeting with the Airport Board tomorrow, and I got another meeting with the city and School Board coming up Thursday, if anybody got any questions or comments or suggestions for anything that I'm involved with, I would definitely consider your suggestions, and that's from the citizens that can hear my voice too. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you are now at appointment of Board and Commission members.
I need a motion to approve, leaving room for exceptions, on our two Board and Commission committees. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are now at resolutions, we have one on the agenda tonight, it's adopting the city of Saginaw 2021 Transportation Asset Management Plan.
I need a motion to adopt.
Go move. Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at miscellaneous business.
Need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Councilmember Astash.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
You have nine losses.
It's a regular order of business. Moved.
It's been moved and supported, we are back in, we have no.
You gotta vote. You can't just, you can't just do a motion in a second, you gotta vote.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? We don't have any to vote on.
That was your last item under miscellaneous, unless there's something.
I need a motion to adjourn. Support, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Drive safely.